Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Here.
Mike Guangeli?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Rafco?
Here.
Sisk?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the glorious wonders so visible around us. The beauty of the river and lake shore, the heritage of our floral city, and above all, the residents of the city of Monroe.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda. And under item B, approval of payments, the amount should read $292,664.63.
Thank you. Regarding consent agenda, it only appears to be the minutes and the payments unless there's any to be pulled by council. Motion would be ordered regarding the consent agenda.
Your Honor, if I may, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Support?
Motion by Councilman Sisk or by Councilwoman Rafco to approve the consent agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Rafco?
Yes.
Sisk?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I have no other items, Your Honor.
Next item is mayor's comments. I'm just going to be brief, just more of an explanation of how we come here to the last meeting for the council of this past term. And as you'll see on the agenda, there's an adjournment that comes up. And the reason it is our charter and how it states it, this is a kind of a pause between the existing council and the new council members that will be sworn in after at our next meeting, yet will follow immediately. So that's all I'll say at this time. With that, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Your Honor?
Councilman Evans?
Make a motion, the meeting be adjourned. Senada.
Support?
There's a motion by Councilman Evans, supported by Councilwoman Rafco, that we adjourn. Senada means we are taking a break or pause. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Rafco?
Yes.
Sisk?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. So in this interim, we transition from our current council to the new council members, but also we have the opportunity, and those that'll be here, as we swear, and the new council members. And we're going to take just a couple of minutes to make sure we get the flag set and be prepared for that. I want to personally thank the council again, as they did the last meeting, for their service for the past two years and four years, and I know I'll see you here around the community. Thank you. So in the reigning council, we're also, if we would, to the left, and then we'll get prepared. So yes, we have the swearing in of the mayor, the clerk, and then the council members. So we'll start it this night. And I'm very pleased that Judge Mark Bromlich has joined us here and wanted to do the swearing in ceremony for us. I know that Judge Bromlich will have some comments for the council as we move forward into the next meeting, but the first we have to do is swear on the council so we can take our seats and conduct business. Judge, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. Please raise your right hand, be after me. I, Robert E. Clark.
I, Robert E. Clark.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free of partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the mayor of the city of Monroe.
Of the mayor of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, we're good. Thank you, Judge. Anyways, we'll proceed to clerk treasurer, and then the council members in order by precinct.
Raise your right hand. I, Michelle J. Lavoy.
I, Michelle J. Lavoy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of clerk treasurer of the city of Monroe.
The duties of the clerk treasurer of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitman? Please raise your right hand. Be after me. I, Paula L. Whitman.
I, Paula L. Whitman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The constitutions of the state of Michigan.
The constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
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 Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction.
Free from partisan distinction.
Or control.
Or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of First Precinct.
The duties of the...
First Precinct.
First Precinct.
Of the city of Monroe.
Of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray Guangeli? Please raise your hands, Ray Guangeli.
I, John Mike Guangeli.
I, John Mike Guangeli.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The constitutions of the state of Michigan.
The constitutions of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Second Precinct Council seat for the city of Monroe.
Second council precinct of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand, be after me. I, Kelly M. Vining.
I, Kelly M. Vining.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction.
Free from partisan distinction.
Or control.
Or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Third Precinct Council seat for the city of Monroe.
Of Third Precinct Council seat for the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. There you go. Raise your right hand, be after me. I, Michelle Germaine.
I, Michelle Germaine.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Fourth Precinct Council seat for the city of Monroe.
Of the Fourth Precinct Council seat of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Mr. Moore? Please raise your right hand, be after me. I, Brian Lamore.
I, Brian Lamore.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and...
Efficient administration. Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction.
Free from partisan distinction.
Or control.
Or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Fifth Precinct Council seat for the city of Monroe.
Of Fifth Precinct Council seat of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Mr. Felder? Please raise your right hand, be after me. I, Andrew B. Felder.
I, Andrew B. Felder.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
To endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the Sixth Precinct Council seat for the city of Monroe.
Of the Sixth Precinct Council seat for the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my duties.
Congratulations.
Andrew, be standing right here. We're going to take a group photograph to be posted here in the council chambers, and the entire council, with the judge and Chief Police Chief McCormick and Fire Chief. Join us, everybody. I think if we get as close as possible, we can, if we can come on this side and...
Let's sashay that way just a little bit. That's right. Kelly found a flag coming out of her head here.
Step on the other side, and we'll this way.
There we go.
Michelle, you come on this side. That's good.
Judge, can you turn toward the mayor for me, please? Kind of face him on an angle a little bit.
Okay. There we go. Perfect.
A smile or a sound thing? Big smile. Here we go, in three, two. We'll do one more. Three, two, big smile. Mary, a smile. Come on, give me a big smile, Mary. All right, perfect.
Now, big close, anybody.
I'm going to stand here, and no one will ever get by me.
That's it?
I'm going to stand here, and no one will get by me.
This time, we'll call the new city council meeting to order for 2018. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Present.
Vining?
Here.
Germaine?
Here.
Lamore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Help us to look to the past with gratitude and to the future with hope. Remember this day, those who have gone before us, who labored not for themselves alone, but with a vision of building a world better than they had known. Inspire in us a like vision. Teach us to be realistic about our limitations, but to never lose hope in our potential to transcend them.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have one item on the consent agenda. If the item is not pulled, a motion will be in order regarding the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, a motion by Councilman Mike Guangeli, supported by Councilwoman Vining, on item that the consent agenda be accepted, placed, and filed, resolution adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Guangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Clerk, next item.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
Okay, as the agenda says, the next comments are the mayor's, but before I make my comments, I'm going to have the council make theirs, but also some introductions that I think are appropriate at this time for special guests that are here and others. But first, I want to give Judge Bromlich the opportunity, thank him again for conducting the ceremony this evening. And Judge, if you could make some comments to the council, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council. It's an honor, and I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me. It's an honor to swear on the new city council members. I'm a city of Monroe boy at heart. Grew up on, first eight years of my life on St. Mary's Avenue, near the Lamores. I'm now proud to own over a business, an office downtown Monroe. My father passed away in 2016. The Bromlich Building, cross-dress, Royal Library. My grandfather ran his real estate business out of there. It's my grandparents owned, then my parents bought it, and my wife and I bought it from my dad's estate. So I'm very interested in what's going on downtown, in the city of Monroe, but particularly downtown. I always will be, always have been. So it's an honor to be back here. When I was pondering public service, some of the hallmarks of public service, a couple of words came to mind. Collaboration, consensus building, pragmatic problem solving. Pragmatic problem solving. Make room for as many people as possible around the table and search for the common good, because that's what you're all here for, is to search for the common good. What's good for your neighbors. I would simply suggest that when you ultimately leave city council, look back with satisfaction that you left the city in a better place in which to live and work than before you joined city council. So with that, I'm just going to be brief, but good luck and God bless. Thank you again.
Thanks, Judge. Thank you for being here. Much appreciated. Before we get into comments, I have a little checklist here, some people that I'd like to recognize and thank them for their attendance. I know that some, we have, as just the judge said, it's collaboration, it's partnerships that make our community stronger. And our community, not only the city of Monroe, but the county of Monroe, and our region in southeast Michigan, and beyond into our friends in Toledo as well. Some of our county commissioners are here this evening. Ms. Dawn Asper is here. Dawn, I can say thank you for being here. Greg Moore is here as well, junior. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it much. I know that speaking with the county administrator, as well as other commissioners, they've sent their best to the council as we start this year. Our friend from the south and our township supervisor, Al Barron, from Monroe Charter Township, is here. Thanks for being here, Ms. Al. And as I always say, welcome to Monroe. As we share each other, we always greet each other in that way. Earlier, the state representative, Jason Shepard, was here. He had another engagement, that he, personal commitment afterwards, but he was here during the reception hour and had an opportunity to talk to the council members and hopefully some of the new council members as well. And I know the community that was here at the reception also. Sister Pat and Sister Helen, thank you both for being here from our friends from the IHM. It's always a great partnership. We collaborated in the past year, and we look forward to some additional partnerships in the years to come. Thank you for being here. Pastor Boone, I saw that you're here. Thank you for being here. I know that a part of our community, a part of our need in our community, and champions that. It's always a pleasure to see you, and thank you for being here this evening as well. And Bill Lavoy is here, our former state representative, but also, as I say, service never ends there if you're in the city of Monroe, because there's always things to do, there's always ways to serve your community. Bill currently serves and is an active member, a citizen, his citizen involvement, and serves on the Port Commission Board. So this is always my chance to say, there's always opportunities to serve in the city of Monroe on boards and commissions. Thank you, Bill, for your service, as Michelle said, even past and present and onto the future. I'm looking to see if I missed anybody. Also, the clerk treasurer, because we're going to make sure we check each other. I see no others?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you all for the residents and the family members to be here. On the agenda, we move forward, and it's an opportunity for council members to say any comments they wish to start the new year. And as we do, we start in January, we start in Precinct One. And then we work our way through the, so in June, it'll be down at Precinct Six, we'll get to speak first. This way, we always keep it rotating and a chance to hear and have everybody have the opportunity to speak first. So it is January. Councilwoman Whitman, comments this evening.
The only comments that I have is that I know this is a new year, a new beginning. I'm looking forward to working with the new council members and doing the best that we can for our community and getting busy. So welcome.
Councilwoman? Councilman Mike Guangeli?
Your Honor, I'd like to thank the residents and citizens for attending the session this evening. It's nice to see everybody come and support the council. I'd like to welcome councilperson Germaine, Lamore, and Felder to the council. Look forward to working with you over the next two years. And with that, Your Honor, I'll turn it over to Councilman Vining.
Very well. Councilwoman Vining?
I want to thank all the residents and my family who's here. My granddaughter London's here to support me. Thanks for coming. And I just want to say, welcome to the new council members. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now we get to hear the new council members. Councilwoman Germaine?
First of all, I want to thank my family for being here and all the support you've given me. And thank everyone for voting, getting out and voting, because that's very important. And I look forward to collaborating with this entire group and looking forward to the changes that we have going forward in the city. So thank you.
Councilman Lamore?
Your Honor, I want to first thank my family and friends for all their support. You've been tremendous this past year. I really appreciate that. And I'd also like to give a special thank you to Ken Miller for all of his support and guidance. He's led me through in the CPC. Thank you, Ken. I appreciate that. And I also want to thank the citizens of Monroe for allowing me this opportunity. I really look forward to serving you, the taxpayers, and now and in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilman Felder?
I would just like to show my appreciation and thank the outgoing council for all their hard work and service. I am more than thrilled to be working with all of you, council members and staff, in these coming two years. I'm really excited about it. I would like to thank my wife for enduring this journey with me, with our new child, and all my friends who have supported me tonight and throughout my travels to get here. So thank you all.
I have a few comments. I'm just going to kind of hopefully go through it quickly, but I want to congratulate the new council members and their willingness to serve their community in an elected capacity. And as I said before, you bring many of your own strengths and opportunities to represent the city here. I recognize that each of the new council members bring previous experience, you know, either as a government-related position, as we had one of our council members, but also those that, the others, that were in appointed citizens' service to the community, serving on boards and commissions, and an opportunity to learn some of the opportunities that, well, making decisions on in the future. So future challenges, I think we all know, there's many future, there's some challenges that we faced in this past two years, but there's challenges that we're going to face here in the next two years to come. I'm not going to go through the long list, because there's too many ample times to review those, but I think with those challenges also comes opportunities. And try to, as we want to achieve growth and prosperity while remaining fiscally responsible, to ensure that future councils also find themselves in the position, I think, as this council finds itself here this year and the year after. So with those opportunities, I think the future of Monroe has to have long-term planning. I think that we're prepared to do that. I think the administration and the leadership under our city manager, Vince Pastu, provides us that best opportunity, and I think the residents should find comfort in knowing that the council and the city manager and the staff are in a position to make the best decisions as we move forward. I'm confident that the city council will work collectively to resolve any future issues and remain focused on serving the community as a whole with the interest of the residents at the forefront as we make our decisions. You know, financial forecasts and a long list of operational improvements are at hand through this council, and the council members will find that out immediately. So it's my opportunity to, not only, they know it's coming, and those here know that starting next Monday evening, the capital improvements joint session with the Citizens' Planning Commission and the city council meets here in these chambers next Monday. And that begins one of many processes, but while this session will appear on impact and will be taped, all residents are welcome to attend and listen as we start to talk about all residents are welcome to attend and listen as we start to talk about those long-term plans, but also with the long-term challenges that we're faced. And the council has prepared themselves. They just didn't show up here this evening, swear themselves in, and have the judge swear them in and say, "We're ready to go." This started back a couple of months ago on the orientations. And I want to thank the city manager and the department staff for preparing the new council members and orienting them as to what they can accept and what they can expect, I should say. Opportunity to introduce the staff, acclimate themselves to city government structures, finances, ongoing projects, future development plans, and council members' responsibilities. I think the existing council members were able to attend some of the meetings as well. And I think it's a good review and an opportunity to move forward. So I think that they've prepared themselves. I know that they're also signed up for the Michigan Municipal League Elected Officers Training. And there's opportunities that the Michigan Municipal League offers at the conferences that I look forward to sharing time with them there as well, as with the council that continues to serve. So my final comments, I want to again welcome and thank the council for your, all your interest to continue to serve, whether you've served in the past or in your previous capacities. And again, welcome to new council members. I'm not going to get past and I'm not going to forget this year, and she's already left the room, I think, but thank Pat Weaver, administrative assistant, for all that she does in preparations for, not only for tonight's reception, but also the ceremony and making things right here this evening for everybody. I also want to recognize clerk treasurer Lavoy for your planning efforts to get for this evening, but also the excellent service the clerk treasurer has provided to the city of Monroe in her four past years of service, and as we look forward to these two years together. So my final comment, thank you all for being here. Judge Bromlich, thank you again for being here. And very honored that you came and swore the council in this evening. So those are my comments.
Clerk Treasurer Lavoy?
Thank you. I, too, want to say welcome to the new council. I'm looking forward to working with you. And welcome back to the current, I call you current council members. For those that I've worked with over the last four years, it's been a pleasure. And Mayor Clark, city manager Pastu, and Matt Buds. I enjoy our almost daily working together. So thank you for all that you do for the city. I wanted to thank my family. I can't do what I do without them. My girls have left the room, I see. But I wanted to make sure that they know I thank them and I appreciate what they do to allow me to do the work that I do with the city and for the city. My parents, my father-in-law, Judge Lavoy, who was unable unfortunately to be here this evening. Great support and, again, I couldn't do it without you. I also want to thank the residents. There is a real benefit to being the front door of the city of Monroe in the clerk treasurer's office. I have learned so much from the residents who come to my counter or call me. Sometimes the lessons are a little hard to take, I suppose, because I don't want to disappoint anyone. But I've had great, great conversations with so many who are excited about the city, who pay attention to what we do here and want to help us make it better. And so, in addition to thanking everyone for coming out and voting and taking part in that process, just want to thank you for being here daily and participating in that way as well. It's a true, true honor to serve all of you. I, when I sometimes don't know what to say, and you probably can't tell that I didn't know what to say since I'm continuing to talk, but I really didn't know what I was going to say tonight. And when I don't know what to say, I oftentimes look to quotes from those who have come before us. And I won't read the entire quote, but I came across one today from Amelia Earhart that I thought really spoke to the city. It starts off with, "The most difficult thing is the decision to act. The rest is merely tenacity." And I see tenacity, I see tenacity in the council, I see tenacity in our residents. And the future isn't going to be easy. The future is never easy. But it really is ours to mold and shape. And so I look forward to working with council and the residents and all of you really in the city and in the region as we work on those endeavors to make the future a little bit brighter and continue the work that has come before us. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing to work hard for all of you.
Thanks, Michelle. Two more thanks. I want to thank Jody Egan, our communications director, not only for what she does, has done throughout the year, but in preparation for today and getting, as you'll see, out in the lobby and on the other floors, the electronic messaging that we have as opposed to a static message in the hallway. Something that's going to be, we've worked on in the past year or two to get that to completion. And here on the day before, she was able to finish that. And I think it messages when the community comes to see messages about meetings and future projects, but also learn more about while you're in the lobby of the city hall. Last person I want to thank, my wife was here, Valerie. After 42 years of marriage that we've had, I think the eight years of me being the mayor may have tested us the most, so. But it's been all good, and I just thank her for being here this evening, so.
City manager Pastu?
Your honor, thank you. My comments will be brief, other than to welcome everyone, new members, and certainly look forward to working with past council members that I have in the past. And as we all know, there are some challenges, but also great opportunities in this wonderful community. Certainly look forward to working with everyone as we kind of navigate our way through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. And as our agenda has, and every meeting has, there's opportunities for citizens' comments. Any comments from those present here this evening? Any comments from those who wish to make any comments to the council this evening? Seeing no comments, we need a motion to adjourn.